Discussion of the review of the 2021 budget. If I can get a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I brought this up instead of waiting till the next meeting is because I don't, I think everybody's had two weeks to look at it and see if there's anything we needed to do. And Mr. Clark was here, and so we pretty much haven't made any major changes. I don't even think we made any changes, actually.
There have been no changes since I passed it out last time.
I can't hear you. I don't know whether...
I say there's been no changes since I passed it out last time.
Okay. Ron, is that my con?
Yeah.
Okay. We got any discussion from council members?
Lonnie, did you say that the police department was adding a little bit to their budget? They had the capital expenditure that they needed?
Their capital expenditures, they requested three vehicles.
Instead of two, as the usual, right?
Well, it goes back where we were getting one, but we've had an increase in, in the need in officers, and so they've been getting a couple. And so they've got three vehicles that have got a lot of mileage on them, and they're going to require quite a bit of maintenance. I didn't feel like that we could support purchasing three vehicles, so I gave them the typical one and then increased their repairs and maintenance line item by the requested amount so that they could have the repairs done on, and we wouldn't have the, the capital investment or the capital outlay all at one time.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
You know, we have reduced the budget, what, roughly 10%? Lonnie?
Well, we reduced the, the revenues by, on the projections that I did, the calculations, and then reduced them 5% to, unless there was a line item that I knew, whether that was 100%, for instance, the Western Carroll County ambulance district, our contract amount is set, so that's as it was before.
Yeah.
But typically, I reduced the revenue by 5%. And then the department, the other department heads came in with their reductions to try to stay within that range.
All right, so we're approximately 5% less than what we were at last year.
That's correct.
And that was pretty much stable from the last two years from that, too, if I remember correctly.
So, and to get some further justification for that, of course, I'm watching our revenue, our sales tax revenue, which is our major stream of income, and, and of course, you all see the spreadsheet that we pass out, and I think we're going to level out probably around a 5% reduction from last year. I don't have it this month thus far. It doesn't come in until about the 20th or the 21st.
Lonnie, I noticed we got the CAPC's budget the last time, and maybe either Susan or Terry can answer this. Ours seems a little bit conservative compared to their sales tax collection. Are we just being more conservative?
I have not seen their budget.
Okay.
I have no, I don't have a clue what, what their budget is, how they derived at it, or whatever. I used a specific methodology in mine, and I, I would prefer for my part to be conservative and then make adjustments accordingly.
Yeah.
But that's just my philosophy.
I agree with you on that.
And so I, I really...
I was just curious if you'd looked at the two.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't tell you.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question about property taxes. I know, well, we're already in December, so if they haven't been paid, obviously, they'd be delinquent as of now because it's December.
That's correct.
Have you seen a, what does that look like this year? I mean, are you saying you haven't seen those numbers yet, or you have?
On property tax?
Correct.
No, I have not.
Okay. And when do you normally see those numbers?
Normally, we don't really see the numbers until after they're paid in, in October 15.
Okay. So you, you would have, you have seen some already because they were paid in October? Or are you saying you're, you're not going to see them until January?
Well, we'll see them for next year until October of next year.
Okay. I guess what I'm, what I'm asking you is, is there a higher percentage of delinquencies this year on the property taxes that you have seen?
I typically don't see the delinquencies because it goes through the...
So let, let me rephrase it.
Okay.
Are your numbers up or below last year?
My numbers are about stable.
Okay.
Maybe up slightly.
Okay.
But I'm anticipating that there are going to be delinquencies, and those delinquencies, of course, if my memory serves me correctly, they're delinquent for three years, and then if they're not paid, they're sent to the state, and then they're held at the state for, I don't know, don't remember the timeline, and then they're put up for auction.
Okay. But late, but late fees are incurred?
Late fees are incurred.
Correct, okay.
But if a property doesn't sell far enough to cover the taxes, then, you know, everybody loses.
I was just curious as to whether or not you had seen an increase or a decrease in that number for the year.
I, I don't really see those numbers.
Okay.
But what I have done, well, you can see here, we budgeted 245,000 last year, and I have budgeted 251,600 this year. And so there will be some delinquencies, but I'm hoping with all the, the turning of the, of real estate that's happening right now, that the, the taxes, the values will go up some.
Okay.
So to compensate for that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Meyer?
I, I did a little research on the inflation rate, and the five years up until last year, the inflation rate was a little over 9%. And if we look at our sales tax revenues, they're not keeping up with inflation, so we sort of need to adjust to, to that figure, I would think. Did, do you find that, too, or am I...
Well, I haven't really, I haven't really gone into that. I use a particular formula based on previous year or nine months of the current year and three months of the previous year. And, you know, people can talk about inflation rates, and they can talk about, you know, this, that, and, you know, you can look at the CPI for small southern cities, and you get another number. And so it's really hard, I think, for us to follow the predictions and those calculations that the economists make. I think we have to work on just to, I'd like to agree on historical and what we project here in Eureka Springs.
How are the water sewer revenues? Are they...
They're going to be down some, I believe, because of the occupancy and, and the COVID situation. And of course, yeah, we've got the vaccine coming out, but we don't know for sure where that's going to, how that's going to affect us and everything. And so unless the rules change, the occupancy seems to be probably been hit harder because, you know, they could only, what is it, 30% or 2/3 or some, some number that, and I'm not sure what that is, but I know they can't go, even if they have the people coming, they're not supposed to fill up.
Right.
Mr. McLough? Terry?
Well, the truth of the matter is, we really, we, we just had to set a bench for the budget, which was what we've done, and then we've got to monitor every month, just like we have this last year.
Sure, absolutely.
And because it's, it's, it's that legal document that, that's going to be subject to adjustment, you know, any given month, depending on what revenues dictate.
Absolutely.
So it's, you know, it's something that we've just got to watch close, do our due diligence.
I think we, I think we have done that, and I think we're going to have to be extremely diligent this coming year because there's a lot of factors involved, there's a lot of moving parts, and, and I, you know, in this budget, I've taken into consideration, tried to take into consideration all of those, and, and develop a budget that I feel like is reasonable and for us to, to work with, but it's budgets are subject to change depending on the circumstances. But if I don't give you a, what I feel like is a realistic budget, then there's really no point in us making a budget.
Yeah, we've got to have a starting point, don't we?
Absolutely.
Heard anybody else? All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll go on to our next item of business. Lonnie, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you all.
Next item is new business is the discussion of hospital location.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Yeah, I would just like the, the council to pass a, a motion to ask the hospital commission to always meet where all the other commissions meet.
I'm not sure we can do that, Mr. Thomas.
We can ask them. I said ask.
Mr. Weaver?
I think his statement of ask probably covers, allows it, but we can't dictate and tell them they have to, no.
All right. I'm, I don't have a problem asking. I don't think we need to have a motion, motion. I mean, if you're just, just ask, and I'll be glad to ask them.
Well, I would like...
Because if we make a motion, that's more of a dictation. So I don't mind asking them at all on there. I don't know. If y'all want to make a motion, you can, so. Ms. Harmon?
I think we've had this discussion before. We asked probably not but six months ago, and certainly not a year ago, for them to meet, you know, have all of the commissions and committees meet in the same place, whether it's here or, or somewhere else, but as long as it was consistent. And I think the main concern was over the recording of the, the actual meeting, because now we're using the little temporary sticks, and sometimes it's hard to hear people and understand who's talking at the time and whatnot. Going back to what Butch said, is, do you know of a particular reason why they cannot meet where everyone else meets that needs to be brought to this group's attention, regardless of who's here in the new year? I mean, it's been an ask several times, so is there a particular reason why it doesn't happen?
I have no idea. I'd have to ask. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I, I would make a motion that you ask what the particular reason is why they can't meet. I mean, because it is, it is a, it is a big piece of our city. It is an important commission of our city, and they are responsible for a very important financial resident, you know, component of the city. So I think in order for those meetings to be in a place that is accessible to all and/or recorded properly, I would just make that motion that we at least ask them why they aren't able to have their meetings in the same location that all other commissions are.
Is that your motion, Susan?
That is.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to amend it to say ask on behalf of the city council, the entire city council. I want, you know, yeah.
Do I need to amend it, or can I just second what he said?
I think you can just second what he said.
Okay.
I mean, it goes without saying it's the entire city council because the city council is the ones that's voting on it, so.
Right.
I mean, it's not on the mayor's behalf, and it's not on anybody else's behalf. It's on the city council. The city council is the ones making the motion.
Okay. So we, I'm sorry. Okay, whatever.
So the motion is to ask the hospital commission the reason why they do not hold their, their meetings. Do you have it?
Yes.
Okay, you're good. All right, then I won't repeat it then.
Okay. So it's not asking them to meet in the usual places, asking them why they're not meeting? I understand it now.
I mean, it sounds like we need to know why they're doing it first, right?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. There's been a motion made to ask the hospital commission why they're not meeting where the other, in the auditorium where the other commissions are meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is a discussion of waiving the late fees on water and sewer.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Ms. Meyer?
You know, the, the light company, the gas company, they're all have, have waived some fees and did some adjusting for citizens. I know we had a moratorium on the INI, but it's the late fees that hit the people who are not making the kind of money they have made because of the restrictions in the restaurants, people that live on tips are not getting that kind of dough. They're, they're just barely making it, and I think it would be, it would be good to just waive that fee. And what does everybody else think?
Ms. Harmon?
I guess I would, now I'm kind of sad that Lonnie left because I'd like to know if, if, if those fees were, if, if he has seen a lot of late fees.
We have, we, you know, we did waive the late fees. The late fees were waived up until two months ago.
Right, right. They had been waived.
And since then, we have seen, of course, more late fees, but no more than normal.
So you think it's...
There hadn't been a significant raise of late fees. Ms. Harmon?
So the number that you're seeing now is consistent with what it's been in years past?
Correct.
Okay.
There may be a little bit more. I mean, it's not, not exactly the same. It's high, it's a little higher, but it's nothing, it's not abnormal. Ms...
Couldn't we waive them like, let's say, till April 1st? Because, you know, we've had a great year, but it is really slowing down, and it, in, you know, COVID, it's, it's still going strong till we get the vaccine. So I think maybe, you know, March it starts up again, and hopefully these people and our restaurants are back, and, you know, they can get back on their feet. But this could be a tough one.
Part of the problem with waiving the late fees is they just tend not to pay the water bill. After a certain point in time, there's, you know, there's no reason. Say we keep waiving it, then we, at some point, water bill needs to be shut off if they don't pay it.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's that consideration. That's the encouragement to pay the water bill on there. Ms. Meyer?
The CDC stated that within the next 90 days, we can expect 3,000 deaths a day, that there will be no improvement till four to six months from now. So we're talking about this pandemic is really taking its toll, and Carroll County is in the top three of new cases. I think, I think that it's only right that we give a break to our working people in town who have been struggling all summer long.
Ms. Harmon?
I think the, the, the question really is, is not necessarily what the CDC is saying about deaths, it's whether or not the city will be, will be busy. And we saw that it was busy in October, November, and pretty much into September. So, and again, I know that the restaurants have been hit because they're at a lower percentage than what a lot of the other businesses are, so I completely understand that. I just don't know how those, those, the number that you said correlates to, to the actual business that will be here in Eureka Springs. It will be slower in January, which it always is, until usually the first week of March. I think the, the vaccine is promising because I think basically most of us are looking at probably an April or May vaccine if we choose to do that, once they've gone through the first responders in nursing homes and things like that. So is there a way, is there a way to reduce the late fees instead of a full late fee, a 50% late fee, or is that just going into the weeds too much?
Mr. McLough?
Are you talking about just the residential, or are you talking about commercial as well? You know, on a residential water bill, you're looking at, you know, $3 to $5 in a late fee.
Is that a figure?
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not like it's a huge figure. So, I mean, granted, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but it's not a life, I mean, it's less than a pack of cigarettes. So, you know, I, maybe we're just pulling and pushing on something that really is not substantial enough to make the difference.
And if it's not substantial enough to make a difference, then we might as well waive it.
Mr. Thomas?
Can, what is the city's policy on cutting, cutting it off, cutting off water?
You know, I'm not sure what the exact policy is. I'm sure after, you know, I'm not sure, Bob, to be honest with you. You know, I, I don't know if it's after, you know, if it's not paid within, if you're missing two water bills, if it gets shut off. Normally, your water bill is shut off after you received your shut-off notice. You know, you got a late fees if it's paid, and then you got a water shut off.
Right.
So, you know, and what we had done, I think we had waived both for a period of time on there. The water wasn't going to be shut off, and the water, and the late fees were waived. And then I think last, two months ago, it came back.
Can, can we extend that with, I mean, proven circumstances? I mean, somebody would really, to me, need to prove they can't...
We can't. That's almost impossible to do.
Okay.
I mean, you know, what, to prove what circumstances. I mean, you got to lay it across the board, straight across the board, make it fair for everyone. Ms. Meyer?
Well, I can remember when we did waive those fees, and Dwayne came and spoke with us and said, you know, it wasn't as bad as he thought it was. I guess he thought that maybe people wouldn't be paying their bills, but, but no, people had been paying their bills because people pay the further water if they need to, if they can.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's two different kinds of fruit. It was the INI fee that was waived for six months. It was not late fees. So if, anyway, there you go. It's, it's two different animals.
Uh-huh, that's right. The INI can be higher, too. It could be more money.
Ms. Harmon?
INI, and if, if I'm correct, it was, was it $10? It was around an average of $10 on a residential, and it was $50 on a commercial business, correct?
For six months.
Those are kind of the threshold, the first tier or whatever? Yeah, so, okay.
All right, further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the late fees until...
This is discussion only. Motion is for discussion only. She seconded for discussion only.
That has nothing to do with anything, that statement. I'm sorry.
You can talk about it, but then you can make up your mind and make a motion. I make a motion that we waive late fees on water sewer bills until the springtime.
I'm waiting for a second, Mickey, before we go and get discussion. I hear you can discuss, no, no second motion fails for lack of a second. All right. All right, that concludes our meeting for this meeting. We have council comments. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd like to take an opportunity to, given the weather, express how much I have appreciated our police department and our public works department and our fire department for all of the work they've done in the last nine months under some very extreme circumstances. And I just want to know, want them to know that I'm very appreciative of their work.
Ms. Green?
Last week, Carol Wright, the, the chair of the CAPC, sent me an article, and it was on the state of the restaurants in Arkansas, and I, I realized it pretty much covered the United States, too. And they've really had a hard time, and I posted on Facebook that if you can during this holiday time, our, our restaurants are heart, our soul of this town. They're the reason most of us live here or want to live here. They're the biggest part, what brings our tourists here. So if, just an idea, if you have extra money, please, or, or need to buy gifts, think, think about our restaurants. Gift certificates would be really nice, or, you know, take home a meal, because, you know, we need them, and, and we need the workers that work with them. And then I wish everybody a happy holiday, and I agree, Bob, I, I appreciate our departments, too. They've really stepped up to the plate.
Ms. Nard?
I just want to thank everybody, all of our residents who have backed me and voted for me and kept up with me for the last 12 years. I am going to miss it. I hope you all miss me, too. Just know I'll still be fighting for y'all. If you have a problem, you can still call. But I do want to thank everybody for all the support, 12 years of support. It's just time to retire. So thank you very much. Hang in there, y'all. It will get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you, Mickey.
Ms. Meyer?
Yesterday, I got a call and found out that a dear friend, one of my daughter's teachers in high school over in Yellville, succumbed to COVID-19. He was just 50 years old. He had retired early to try to avoid contracting this thing, but his wife continued to work, and she evidently brought it home. Marion County does not have the infection rate that we have over here, so, folks, be very careful. Wear your masks and stay away from people that don't wear them.
Ms. Harmon?
Nothing.
Mr. McLough?
Merry Christmas.
You know, I skipped over, is there anybody that has anything for agenda for next meeting?
Why are we having a meeting?
Well, if we don't have anything on the agenda, we may not. So, but I did skip that over and wanted to make sure that that was pointed out, so. I really have no comments, except I want everybody to be safe, and especially in through, with this weather, be careful when you're walking and driving. It's beautiful out there, but it's also slick and hazardous. And, and as Mr. Meyer and other people said, too, please wear your mask and, and try to maintain your distances because this COVID isn't over, and it won't be over for a while. And also, as Ms. Green said, you know, let's do, we, we do a lot with our restaurants around here, which we go out and we buy and, and get a lot of takeouts, so keep them in mind, so. Anyway, if there's nothing else, all those in favor in agreement?
Wait, wait, motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I did not make some comments because I thought there would be another meeting. Are you suggesting that might be canceled?
If we don't have any agenda items... If we don't have any agenda items, we may not.
Okay, then can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd just like to point out that Mickey and I are the only ones here that voted yes on ordinance 2223. And there'll be a new council in January, and I would really like the new council just to take a vote on reaffirmation of the commitment to nondiscrimination here in the city, since we have lost some of our representation. And for the last four years, that, that particular LBGT group has had every right that they've gained over the past, you know, 20 years threatened, and it would be, I think, I'm talking about President Trump and all he's done.
Oh, I'm saying.
Yeah. So I just think it would, would be a good thing for the, for the citizens if the new council at the first meeting, when you're electing all the other people, would reaffirm the city's commitment to nondiscrimination.
And I'll second that. Well, did you want to put it on the agenda or something, Bob?
I don't want to have a meeting just for that.
No, no.
You're in December.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Well, I won't be here, I can't put stuff on that agenda.
All right, and I'm sure we'll remember it's a good idea, Bob. So, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.